Alday.
Hey, hi, how's it going? I haven't been kicked out yet.
Well, we, we, we keep asking, but they said not, not yet.
Gentlemen, it is six o'clock. I am, uh, calling this meeting to order. First thing we need is a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Erasmo Villarreal. Commissioner Jorge Dominguez.
Present.
Commissioner Rafael Dueñas.
Present.
Commissioner Abraham Lugo.
Present.
Commissioner Johnny Narváiz. Commissioner Johnny Narváiz.
Present.
Commissioner Raúl Lugalde. Commissioner Raúl.
Present here, present.
Commissioner Larry Dovalina.
Here.
Commissioner Carlos Flores. Commissioner Ana Villarreal. Mr. Chairman, you do have court.
All right, thank you. Next item that we have is, uh, citizens' comments. We'll give it a minute or two, unless you have somebody on the line now.
Well, sir, we don't, and if we do, we will, we will let you know, we will advise you.
Chairman, uh, if I can be recognized real quick, uh, I just want to go ahead and make a real comment. First, I would like to make a motion to, uh, to excuse the, uh, commissioners that are not present.
Who's that, Flores?
Yes.
I'll second, I'll second the motion, Lugalde.
We have a motion in a second. Those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries.
And on the other item, real quick, uh, from the last meeting.
That was all, all commissioners not present, correct?
Yes, all commissioners not present, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to mention real quick, Mr. Chairman, on the last meeting, I was not able to, uh, to connect to the, uh, to the meeting. And, uh, I, I hope that I was excused at that meeting because it was not purposely the reason for me not to be present. If it's required that if somebody can make a motion to excuse, uh, whoever was not present on last, uh, meeting, maybe that is an order, uh, that's what I'm being, what I'm requesting.
Okay.
If possible, then I'll, I will make that motion, Commissioner.
Motion, do we have a second?
In that vice.
That right, seconds, all those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Heard, motion carries.
Just a clarification, this is gonna be a correction to the minutes from last meeting, correct?
That's the way I see it too, because it's a meeting of the February the fifth, twenty-fifth. Special.
Yes.
It's gonna be a correction to the minutes, yes.
Thank you, Larry.
All right. Kirby, is anybody in the line?
No, sir.
All right, and we're moving right along. The next item that we have is, um, the election of officers. We need to elect the vice chair because Joey Thays was the vice chair.
Commissioner?
Yes.
The consideration for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting?
I'm so sorry, that's true, I missed that. Yes, anybody, uh, make a motion on the minutes with a correction?
Mr. Chairman, I, I failed to abstain from a vote on the final plat for a property on Green Ranch. And I would ask that the minutes show, uh, instead of being in favor as an abstention, please.
Okay, we can make that correction.
Do we need a motion for that?
For approval of the minutes.
Well, that's a correction, yeah, the motion is, is to, uh, approve the minutes with the corrections to the attendance. And for Mr. Dovalina abstaining from the plat on Green Ranch, that would be the motion.
Commissioner Lugalde, take a motion to, um, make those corrections to the minutes and approve them with corrections.
All right, we have that motion, we have a second.
In that vice.
Right, seconds, all those were not in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, minutes are approved with as corrected. The next item, the election of officers, uh, as I was saying, uh, we need to elect the vice chairman. Our vice chairman was, uh, Joey Thays. And he's been replaced on the commission, so the floor is gonna be open to nominations for anybody.
Uh, I would nominate, I would nominate, uh, George Dominguez.
All right, we have a nomination for vice chair, are there any other nominations?
I'll second the nomination for Mr. Dominguez.
There is a second on the nomination. All those who are not in favor, unless there's another, unless there's somebody else who is interested. Now, I got a motion, I got a second on that. If not, all those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Larry, thank you, board.
Congratulations, George.
Thank you.
All right, here we go, next item, public hearings. Amending this zoning ordinance map to the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of special use permit for mini storage warehousing on approximately five point zero one acre situated, uh, at the location north of St. Luke Boulevard, east of Ahidu Avenue. This is an item from last time that was, uh, tabled.
Yes, sir, it is. For the public record, for the public who may be watching this, I'll ask Vanessa to give the presentation again, but maybe to be a little brief, but just call any special note to anything that may have changed, Vanessa, which I added a, I added a, a couple points and all of the, we don't have to review all of them, but all the conditions of the SUP should, should we get into that discussion?
All right.
Vanessa?
Um, good afternoon, Vanessa Guerra from your planning staff. Uh, the owner is Celito Lindo Limited, uh, Ricardo Villarreal representative. Uh, the property is located on five point one acres, uh, situated north of St. Luke and east of Ahidu. And the proposed use is for mini storage warehousing, three letters were sent out and one was received in favor. Uh, the, it's located, the property is located in, in, uh, South Laredo. The property is vacant and unplanted. That's a street view. Uh, it is zone B one, uh, surrounded by R one and B three. It is, the future land use designates this area as a neighborhood mixed use. And staff supports the proposed SUP. It is in conformance with the conference of plans designation, it's compatible with the surrounding existing zones. It does meet its separation distance requirements. Um, and the conditions are listed in the staff report. Staff is willing to amend the SUP to allow the permit to be issued to someone other than the owner, however, staff insists that the SUP remains non-transferable. A the special use permit and the, the condition in red is, is, uh, what you see with, with the revision. Um, instead of Celito Lindo and, uh, Mr. Carranco, it will, um, the, oh, the person to whom it will be issued is Anthony Scalia. And, uh, the condition is, is, remains, uh, that it will be non-transferable. And the rest of the conditions will remain, uh, the same.
Vanessa, if I could interrupt just to point out a couple things, one, that the applicant did provide us with a contract that shows that they are in a contract with Mr. Anthony Scalia. We did not provide that as part of the public record because it's, it's private, but it demonstrated to us that they are in fact in a legal, uh, position for that, for Anthony Scalia to take over the property. I'd also like to point out with these conditions here, these fifteen conditions that we need to, we can discuss, I'm not sure we need to, other than to say that this conditional use permit has conditions, not just that we're gonna build a mini storage here, but how it's going to be operated. For example, number seven, flammable, combustibles, corrosive, toxins, nuclear waste, hazardous waste, et cetera. No permits for storage of any of these materials shall be issued. Um, and that, you know, there, there are conditions here that we want to make sure that if in the future this property is sold to somebody we don't know, who we can't name it to right now, we want to make sure that these conditions are still met, which is why number one is very important. This is non-transferable. It does not transfer to a new owner, they need to come in and get a special use permit, that can be done a couple ways. But the existing owner could go through this process, just like Celito Lindo is right now, and then we could issue it to the new owner if they want to do a contingent sell. Or the new owner could purchase this property and come in and get a special use permit. And there's not gonna be a problem, it's already many warehouses, they're just renewing the agreement that they have with the city. This is done all the time in the city, uh, when somebody gets a new special use permit for, say, you know, a use that's conditional or a special use. So I just wanted to point those things out. Vanessa?
Uh, there's the proposed motion, uh, the motion would be to recommend approval or denial, and that is the number that the public may call in.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, when, when you say it's non-transferable, you're saying it's non-transferable as to the use or as to the name of the person that is operating the facility? Because as you said, it's already a mini storage. So, so could you explain that?
Kirby?
Yes, sir, the, the, the building, the structure itself is going to get built. And it's gonna be built for many warehouses, but their, but its operation is gonna be conditional based on these conditions listed. And so we want to maintain that. So if a new owner comes in who didn't agree to these conditions, we want to reestablish this permit, this agreement with them by issuing a new special use permit. For any special use permit or any conditional use permit that the city issues, it is always non-transferable. Always has to get renewed with a new owner. So we're asking that this, uh, that this be treated the same, that it be non-transferable as are all our other special use permits and conditional use permits.
I'm not totally familiar with the land, with the land development ordinance. Is there a way that the commissioners can get, or maybe they already have, uh, a copy of the land development code so that we can make reference to whatever those things are, uh, when they're brought up in a meeting?
Yes, it is available on our website, if you go to our website, it's, it's, uh, right there on the first page on the homepage, right?
So you don't have them in a hardbound copy?
No, sir, we've gone almost completely digital with all of our documents.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, if I may, we do have someone in the line. Uh, Mr. Chenz Carranco is on the line.
All right, put him on.
Go ahead, Mr. Carranco.
Hello, uh, I'm watching it right now on, on, um, on the internet, and you all are still talking, but, uh, have you finished the talking?
Amanda, could you let them know we have, and that he has three minutes?
Yes, they can, Mr. Carranco, go ahead, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you so much.
Could you just turn off the background TV?
Mr. Carranco, can you lower down or turn off the background from the TV, please?
Yes.
Go ahead, you may be speaking.
Okay, I can, will I be able to hear them?
Yes.
It, it's just an opportunity to speak, it's not an opportunity to engage.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. Uh, thank you for letting me speak, uh, I'm the, uh, managing, uh, partner of Celito Lindos through my LLC, Una Development. And first of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to, for, this prestigious board. The, the owner is from Dallas. Uh, he's a friend of the family. And, um, he's a reputable businessman. He owns various, uh, mini storages. And I'm afraid that, um, if we put a non-transferable property, buys it, he is not gonna wanna buy it. The reason I'm saying that is it would be like the city of Laredo handcuffing him. I, I think we can put in the deed that, um, all, all the ordinances that, that must comply with, with, with this special use permit, but followed. And I understand, um, Kirby, uh, comments, you know, we don't want flammable, nobody wants any dangerous uh, materials there. But, but I feel like if, if we put it non-transferable, Kirby says it wouldn't be a problem. He may not be there five years from now when he decides to sell it. But I, I think if we put a deed, uh, in the deed that we put that must comply with whatever concerns Mr. Kirby has, uh, it's in the deed.
Okay. Kirby?
Yes, sir, um, we, this may, if this was a concern with the ordinance, you know, maybe the applicant could have brought it up at the beginning of the process, a year ago, two years ago. No one has had a problem with this provision in the ordinance until he found a buyer who is having, is maybe having a problem with this provision. The fact remains that this is how we do special use permits and conditional use permits for, for all special use and conditional use permits in the city. We renew it when there's a new owner. And that is not a problem, has not been a problem, you can attest to the fact that twenty years ago it wasn't a problem. It's, it's, you know, something like this that's built as mini storage, we're not gonna say, oh, now it has to be a water park. No, they're getting a conditional use permit, but it has conditions on it, we want to make sure those are maintained as long as they stay mini storage. And it's, it's, um, to treat this applicant differently than others because uh, there's a financial interest in it, I think would be unfair. I think it's important to treat all of our applicants the same way. And it's not an unreasonable, uh, condition or request.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I do have, uh, Ricardo Villarreal, uh, on, on the line for any questions that the commission may have.
Okay.
Mr. Carranco.
Thank you, Rafa, we'll, we'll wait till the commission has questions.
We not finished with Mr. Carranco.
One moment, Mr. Carranco.
Okay, Mr. Carranco's still on, does he have anything else to add?
It is past the three minutes unless you wish to continue.
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, I don't know if he understood, did he hear everything? Yes? Amanda is?
Yes, yes, he's, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Carranco.
Okay, thank you. The, the actual, uh, ordinance of states that certain SUPs are non-transferable. And if you go to the actual code, the ordinance code, you'll see that bars, uh, uh, tobacco sales and restaurants that sell liquor are non-transferable. But if you go to the code where it refers to mini storages, it does not, I repeat, it does not mention that they're non-transferable. I believe Mr. Kirby's comment is a policy that Laredo has had, and it's not in the code. And I think maybe I understand where he's coming from, and if there's a way to prevent that by putting it in the deed, uh, would be fine. From out of town that want to invest in Laredo, if, if you put one thing in the quote and then say it's a policy, then, uh, they're gonna go to Macallan or some other city. Did we review the code?
Well, yeah, go ahead. Kirby or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, a deed restriction unfortunately would not be what the city would, would like to see because it's not something we could enforce. However, with a conditional use permit, yes, all the conditions aren't listed, that's the case for every one of the conditional special use permits we have, all the conditions are not listed in the ordinance. But the mere fact that it's a special use permit gives us the ability to ask for these conditions. And with every special use permit we ask for, we ask that it's non-transferable. So yes, it's correct that it is a policy, but it's a policy that we've applied across the board to every applicant that comes in. And, and, and been accepted, I should add as well. However, it is within the, if, if the planning commission wants to recommend striking, or if the city council wants to strike a condition, it is certainly within the purview of the planning commission to recommend that, and the city council to decide to strike something. I'm just making the case that it is a condition we want because we want to make sure that agreement stays in place. We're not saying mini storages are bad, we support it, we're in support of it. We're just showing that, we're just saying that we, we want these conditions to make sure they stay for future applicants and I don't see anyone in the future opposing mini storages after they've been built.
Yeah, I don't either. Kirby, let me ask you a quick question of this, um, as we're doing recoding Laredo, are mini storages being considered to be taken out of special use permits and given its own zoning?
We are considering removing, I would say about ninety-five percent of the application of special use and conditional use permits. So in the future, we change the code, which will be relatively soon. We don't want to do that by special use permit, we want to, we want to continue. But I would say for, for this, we would list those conditions in the code. And so those could, every one of the conditions here makes sense to our staff, that's why they're in the, it just lists up because they used to be in there, we list things because they make sense. And they will be in the ordinance at some point if the council decides to vote on it.
If, if the, in the, in the future, the the SUPs change, how would it affect, uh, any property that had an SUP on it?
That would be a good question, probably a question for our legal to review, it's something we are discussing, does it, are they grandfathered in on a special use permit?
Exactly.
Because if we make this, um, that, well, part of the question of making something non-transferable with a special use permit is the legality of it. That isn't binding to the next person who buying, who purchases this property because they're not named, they didn't make this agreement with the city. And that's part of the, part of the issue, why we want it non-transferable so that the new person has to come in and make an agreement so they're going.
Well, but Kirby, I mean, like you said, once the units are built, I mean.
The, the structure itself obviously is permitted, but the operations of it that we're making sure it only, you know, not certain materials can be stored there and that there has.
I, I agree with that, I think, I think the comment that, uh, the caller had, Mr. Carranco was strictly on the comment of a non-transferable.
Let me say it this way, there is, if we permit these structures to be built as mini warehouse, there's no way they could not.
Yeah.
You know, there's no way we could then say, they want to sell this to somebody, oh, sorry, you can't do mini warehouse.
Right.
That's not the case, this is just not, that's an unfounded concern.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, do we have, uh?
But I, but I think that that is the concern. Even though it's an unfounded concern. So if, if there is a, a way to uh, take that concern and somehow add it, uh, to the restrictions where, where you say the, the, the issue is in question in the future, but the ownership is. Uh, maybe that'll create a, a comfort zone for this person and for the purchaser. That, that in fact the use will continue to be a mini story where, mini storage, uh, warehouse.
You got a break here on the, on the line?
We could add a condition number sixteen that says, um, in the future, if this property is sold, the, the use and the conditions here, um, yeah, I understand that, that, that that would persist for the, as long as the new owner agreed to them, yeah, we could put that language.
Yeah, that would, that would kind of like cover it, I think so too.
We'll review with our legal, that's a good recommendation, if, if the, if the commission decides to vote that way, we could, we will, you with legal to get the right language in there to say yes to that.
All right. Okay, uh, I know we have another applicant, another interested caller, Mr. Villarreal on the line, Rick Villarreal.
Uh, go ahead, Rick, you're, you're live.
Hello, this is Ricardo Villarreal with Howland Engineering, representing the client. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's staff. Um, I do want to add here, I, I've been listening back and forth, uh, so, the reason, uh, the reason this was tabled was because there was some misinformation, uh, being said on the last meeting in that it specifically stated in the ordinance that this type of special use permit, not conditional use permit, special use permit was non-transferable. Um, also, that the commission couldn't act on deleting this comment from the, uh, from, from what, from what has been stated there in the planning comments. We, we tabled this item to specifically go into detail and really look at the ordinance on what it meant and what it actually says. So the ordinance actually does give guidance on the operation of a mini storage. Part of those guidances are pretty much common to and on from the planning comments. However, it does not state that an SUP for a mini storage is non-transferable. Now, I know it's been said that, uh, people don't want to give special consideration from one client or the other. We are just abiding by the ordinance. Specifically on a use that's permanent, a structure that's permanent, in that when this, when, when it gets transferred, um, the conditions that we agree upon today should stay on there and not have a future P and D commission or future director lessen those restrictions. We're all thinking it's gonna happen, it's not gonna happen, we can't foresee that future. So we rather agree to what the ordinance actually lets us do today. Now, most of the SUPs that come through the P and Z and through council have to do with alcohol sales, either through restaurant, through saloon, through bars. So most of the time you see the non-transferable comment on there. Now, that's specifically within those subsections, specifically gives the ordinance gives guidance to make those non-transferable. Here, we're talking about a completely different section of it that allows us to transfer this. Now, we're not asking for any special treatment as been, as what's been said, we're just asking to abide by the actual ordinance. We just gotta remember, when we tabled this item, we went back to look to see if it was in the ordinance as stated in the previous meeting, and whether this commission can vote to strike this comment out. Now, I think, I think we can all agree that it's not in the, that it's not in the ordinance, that this is more of a policy by planning. Now, in general, speaking to multiple engineers, to, uh, to, uh, the legal, um, field around Laredo, I think these SUPs were meant for mini malls, that if you go and you rent a certain space, and then that lease ends and a new leasing comes in, well, they can't take over that SUP even though it's in the same spot. That's what they mean by non-transmissible. In this case, where a structure is completely permanent, and five years from now they sell it, they can't change the use. This use follows the last. And so that's why we request for no one to be stricken, um, to follow the ordinance and allow this special, special use permit, not conditional use permit, special use permit to be transferable in the future to any assignee or any future company. Now, I, I, I would just literally want to clarify this with planning. This first comment is a policy, it is not by ordinance as previously told.
Okay. All right, uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Villarreal?
Um, if I may be recognized, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
The, uh, I've been, uh, following up and, uh, and also I, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, Vanessa and Kirby. And, um, I, I believe that, uh, on this particular instance, the, uh, we are, our city council is going to grant a right to build the, uh, the storages again. And what, uh, Mr. Villarreal is saying, those storages are not gonna go anywhere, I mean, they're not gonna change from one day to another into something else. I mean, definitely, the list of, uh, of recommendations or conditions that, uh, planning is, uh, is giving out for, uh, for the developer, I think they're good. I don't agree as far as not being transferred. For the developer, I think they're good. I don't agree as far as not being transferable. And I want to tell you why. And I'm sure, Mr. Chairman, that you might be uh, aware that there's some properties that now. They have not been able to sell them or to market them, affecting the the owners in a in a real bad manner. Adversely, because they can't sell it, because they now they need to reapply for the special use permit. And I'm not going to mention names because uh, it's not on the agenda. So that being said, and and the fact that we're given a right to Mr. Escalia. To get the special use permit, I think that we should remove. The non-transferable and actually make a recommendation that it runs with the land. Uh, being that the uh, that that they're going to make a big investment and uh, and the investment is going to be uh, the uh, the storages. And the idea is to mark them on the uh, on the future. I agree with Kirby that the uh, that the conditions should stay there, and they are, because they're going to be actually running with the land. Once you put those storages there, I mean, they're not going anywhere. They're storages. And the special use permit should be transferable, because they're going to be operated. Operable by the same fact as a storage. Already the conditions exist. I represent uh, that uh, that district, and I feel that it is appropriate that we approve. I would make a motion to approve, together with with the conditions, provided that the uh, uh, the condition number one. And that the wording would be that it would run with the land, that once they sell it, it would run with the land. I if uh, if the applicant is good with that, then I I would make a motion to approve it. With the uh, with that with the division of the condition number one. And actually add that we will approve it and send the recommendation to city council. Based on this particular instance, Mr. Chairman. That it it will be in the storages now, in ten years, in twenty years from now. So I feel that it should run with the land.
Okay, all right. So you you have a motion. All right. But before I before I entertain your motion, let me just one last thing. This is still a public hearing. Do we have anybody else on the line who wants to speak?
No, Chairman, we don't.
Okay, all right. With that being said, that there's nobody else who wishes to speak in this public hearing. Uh, Mr. Dominguez, go ahead and make your motion, please.
I'll make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, to to approve the item with the conditions that planning and zoning have imposed. Except condition number one. On the contrary, I would like to have it rewarded with a with a positive recommendation to city council. To approve the uh, the uh, special use permit and that it runs with the land. That uh, they don't have to come back and and reapply for the special use permit. I think the conditions. And the fact that uh, that the construction is going to be unique, we don't have to burden. The uh, the owner coming back to to reapply for the special use permit.
Okay, so then your motion is that, I mean, also includes to close the public hearing, right?
That is correct. Uh, I'm sorry, close the the public hearing.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Ugalde second the motion.
Ugalde seconds the motion. All those who are not, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
So does this mean that we're permanently doing a zone and it's not a special use zone? We're we're permanently zoning the land to be used for mini storage warehousing.
Well, actually, what what we are proving, Larry, would be the special use permit for this particular application. Uh, if anybody would come in the future with something different, we would have to look at it on a on a one-to-one basis. Being that this is a unique request, and those uh, uh, storages are not going to change into a motel. Uh, they actually, I I feel that the special use permit should be granted. And 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 that it will run with the land on that particular instance.
Well, I I think the key thing there on this is this, I think the current zoning is B one, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Kirby or Vanessa? B one, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the zoning on that property is B one. The special use, all it's going to do is allow the the construction of mini warehouses, many storages. If that use changes for whatever, the only thing it can change to is whatever is allowed under a B one. That's that's all, because that's the current zoning right now of that property. So if for whatever reason, in next number of years, they want to knock those down. Well, the and then the zoning stays B one, then whatever is allowable in a B one can then be constructed, but that's about it.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, uh, the special use permit is for uh, for storages. So uh, you're correct. By the time those searches are removed, uh, the S the the S U P will actually be uh.
Mr. Chairman, this is Raoul, uh, Ugalde. They understand that the it's transferable, the the special use permit. So the only thing they can do with a property is uh, as for other storage units, if they were to resell it. If they pick another use for it, they would have to come back and and make, uh, they have to go to building department. They would have to come back and rezonate. For a different use, so no, we're not changing the zoning zoning permanently. We're just making the S U P transferable.
All we're doing is, you're absolutely, all we're doing is approving an S U P. That allows many storage warehousing on this property, which has a B one zone. That's it. Anything other than that in the future, any changes other than that, it goes back to zoning and whatever the zoning allows is what they can do.
Yeah, and that'd be great, because if I'm thinking of it, if I'm doing it as an investment and I want to change the zoning and get the S U P now. And then market it that way, that it's already has a special use permit for 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 storages, then that that's that's what I want as.
Yeah.
If I'm going to.
Yes, sir. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor and Ugalde just seconded it. Uh, all those who are not in favor of the motion. Signified by saying aye. With none heard, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Is reviewed consideration of the following master plans, a consideration of Central Village subdivision master plan. The intended residential and commercial.
Uh, like the one before, this was tabled. So you've heard this before, but for the members of the members of the public who may be watching, I'm going to ask. Mr. Vidauri to give this presentation again. Rafa?
Sure, certainly. For the for the record, the applicant, L ninety-one B C Properties, engineer of record, Peua Consulting. Approximately forty-seven point thirty-nine acres, south located south of US Highway fifty-nine and west of Bob Bullock Loop. The zoning for this two hundred and fifty-four lot development is B three and R one A, and the proposed uses are residential and commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. This is a image of the prior uh, master plan that was submitted in the prior packet. And this is a view of the modifications for the newly submitted.
Can we pause here, Rafa, just to point out the differences? Here before, as you may recall, there were three dead ends. And down here, this was a dead, these two were dead ends. So we spoke with the applicant to move this this, to move the road. Let me use a different color, to move this road further west. So that we could have enough room to loop these dead. Oh, whoops, that all went away. Uh, let me see. Was that helpful to see the annotation? Basically putting a loop. On these dead ends. Same here as well, to loop this, so that a future development needs to connect, it can connect at this point or any other point.
All right. Okay.
Let me get out of that.
So that's, okay, do we have the engineer of record on the line?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your record, we do have Mr. Castillo on the line.
All right.
You may address the commission.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Staff, uh, Oscar Castillo, representing the client. Uh, and I concur with the comment.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that. Kirby, can somebody, I did not hear that clearly.
Uh, we concur with the comments and we're here to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I got you. Thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions?
I move to approve.
We have a motion and do we have a second?
Second, Doña.
Any seconds, all those who are not in favor of the motion signified by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Is the consideration of the following preliminary plots. Preliminary consideration of the plot of Central Village subdivision phase one, the intended residential and commercial. Imagine it's the same presentation, it's just cutting back down a portion of that master plan, right?
That is correct, sir.
All right, could you? Put up the of the master plan that that is, all right, so this is phase one. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
T U, uh, with the consulting. I, uh, um, we concur with the comment and we're here to answer any question.
Very good. Does anybody in the commission have any questions? All right, with none heard, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Chairman.
I have a motion by Mr. Dominguez and a second by Mr. Valina. All those who are not in favor of the motion signified by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Thank you. The next item, preliminary consideration of the plot of River Hill South subdivision phase three, the intended residential.
For the record, the applicant, River Hills Investments Limited, engineer of record, Portas Nans Engineering. Approximately eighteen point seventy-nine acres located west of US Highway eighty-three, south and north of Masterson Road. The zoning for this ninety-six lot development is R two. General location. Aerial view. Proposed plot. Street view. Comments from planning and engineering. Water utilities and traffic safety. And utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Do we have the engineer record on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have Mr. Nance on the line. Mr. Nance, you may address the commission.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is Wayne. Uh, we agree with all the comments.
Okay, very good. Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Nance? All right, with none heard, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to the comments, not advice.
Not advice, is there a second?
Second, Doña, sir.
Any seconds, all those who are not in favor of the motion signified by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Uh, Director's comments.
Yes, sir. Well, as you can see, this is one example of of many, for those of y'all that have been here, where. You may not agree with staff comments, and that is perfectly fine. I just want to reiterate that. We do our best to put together the comments based on, based on history and policies that have been established. There's usually good reasons behind the things that we do. But you're afforded the opportunity to to make recommendations to council or to approve things in a different way. Although it is important, we follow the the ordinances that are that are established. Where we don't have an established ordinance, we do have some room for flexibility. And at the end of the day, we respect your decisions that you make. And it is the authority that rests with you and that has been entrusted to you, so we we respect that. And even though we disagree, I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to say that we're grateful for your service. We respect your decisions that you arrive at. And and we appreciate the opportunity to work with you and to serve as your staff here at the city. Want to thank each and every one of you for your service, for those of you that have been here a while, for those of you that are going to stay a while, for those of you that may leave soon. We you do not get paid for the time that you spend preparing outside of this meeting. You don't get paid for the time in this meeting. You don't get paid at all. You do this because you love your community and you want to serve, and we appreciate that. So thank you very much. And uh, we will see you in a couple of weeks.
Kirby, before we sign off, I I'd like to bring something up. Um, I would like for us to have. The engineers or anybody who's going to address this commission to also be allowed to get in on on the webex. I think it's a lot easier for us to be able to see what somebody's trying to present to us, if they got a document or something. Than to just be on the phone. I would strongly recommend, and of course, I'm going to open this up to the commission. But I would strongly recommend that we allow those people that have a specific item on the agenda. To be able to come up on the webex and also address the commission. And I'm going to open that up to the commission members to see what their thoughts on that are.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think uh, that uh, the communications are very poor with the uh, from the applicants. Uh, to us and uh, and it's very frustrating for them and for us. Not to not to fully understand what their their point that they're trying to bring across. Once we give them the three minutes, uh, the three minutes, they they go real fast. So uh, that's one of the items. The second one is uh, it seems that Kirby, I think that eventually. We're going to be opening and probably be at city council meetings or or chambers. If if that's going to happen, let's go ahead and uh, and uh, and forget about new equipment. I I I bring this every time, but some of the issues is the equipment. I mean, we were supposed to get equipment. Uh, I requested that equipment back in uh, probably at the middle of the pandemic. And if I was told by 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 you, Kirby, that they had been ordered. And then all of a sudden, uh, we found out that they had not even been ordered, which is fine. It's not uh, it's not a comment against you. It actually is just a comment that I want to make on record because uh, the uh, some of the equipment that we have. Is it might not be as as good as other commissioners. And it creates frustration not to be able to communicate properly. But I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think that anybody that is going to be doing a presentation should be on the web with us. So we can actually have a better access to their to their comments over what they're going to be bringing before us. Take this right.
All right, anybody else in the commission have any thoughts on that?
Si me lo permite, Chairman, Doña. Y yo quiero agradecer a a Kirby y a todo el estado de la ciudad por sus recomendaciones. Por todo lo que ellos exponen en las juntas, cada ello aprendo más. No es una controversia entre ellos y nosotros, yo creo que tanto ellos como nosotros buscamos el desarrollo de del Laredo. Y el bienestar para toda la ciudad de Laredo. Y yo en lo personal quiero agradecer porque cada junta yo aprendo mucho de ellos y también de ustedes. Gracias, Chairman.
Okay, gracias. Anybody else?
Commissioner, may I uh, address the concern?
Of course.
Thank you, sir. I'll just say that um, in our unique handling of this. We have tried to balance all the issues. We would love for it to be as easy as when it's in person. Fortunately, there are challenges to adding more people to the meeting, and we've tried to find a balance. If you look at how the city council is run. All they're accepting is comment cards, so they're not accepting, they're not allowing anyone to enter the meeting. We've we found a good compromise. With allowing calls to be made, and it is a little difficult. But the challenge of adding multiple people to the meeting is significant, and we've learned that from experience. So what I would say is, give us the flexibility or allow us the flexibility. If the meeting agenda is small, we'll try it out. Um, when the when it's big, we may have to go back to calls, because the number of people in a meeting adds complexity. Exponentially to the meeting, running the meeting, managing it. But we'll try it out. We'll try it out and see how it is, especially when it's small, I think we can accommodate. Like today would have been, you know, we could have, could have been that for a couple.
Well, you know, it may become a mood issue. I mean, it may be that with a governor. Opening up at a hundred percent, the city council may have to say, you know what, uh. We're going to hold these meetings now, maybe using a standard of six-foot distancing in between commissioners and staff and applicants or whatever. But it may be a short time before these things go back to an in-person thing, I'm I'm thinking, maybe.
One day when the city council makes some decisions on how that how that goes, but it may very well be soon that we have open meetings again. Sorry to interrupt, Larry.
Okay, the the governor did not lift the. Comments related to open meetings, and they continue in effect until April, from what I understand. And and so the public meetings will continue to be held like they are today without the public being in the meetings. being in the meetings. And so I don't know what's going to happen in the future. Uh but certainly, uh they they may change, but they have not changed.
Yeah.
Relate to that.
It may be like a few months.
Yeah, he's allowed local autonomy as far as the county judges and the facilities that are owned or operated by the local governments. And they still can declare an emergency and continue what they have done with the masking, with the social distancing and all the other things that have happened in the past.
Okay, okay. All right, gentlemen, then uh want to thank you all. Kirby, thank you and the staff for everything. It was a very good meeting. Uh and we will see you all at the next meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All those who are not in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you all very much and we'll see you next time.
Thanks a lot. Gracias, Commissioner Doñas. Gracias.